Everyone, and we'll call our meeting to order. It's nice to have a little bit warmer weather today. It's funny how our mine switches, isn't it?
It's only thirty-two below.
See, it's only twenty-three below, so it's good. So, our first councillor Parslow is on the line with us this morning, phoning in from the sunny lower mainland, so we welcome him. And Charlie, unless you have something we'll call that you want to vote for opposed to, we'll use that in that manner, if that's all right?
If you're wanting to vote against is when, otherwise I'll just assume you're in favor of it? Sure.
Thank you. So, our first item of business, item two, is new councillor business. I didn't have anything. Councillor?
We have a public hearing first.
Sorry?
We have a public hearing before the meeting.
Oh, my apologies.
Terry forgot to.
Terry forgets everything, though.
See, I was nice.
You'll what? My apologies, I forgot. Oh, well, thank you. So, we'll move right into our open the public hearing, and so I'll ask the Director of Corporate Administration to read aloud the notice.
Thank you. This public hearing is being held to hear from anyone who may be affected by the proposed changes to the city's zoning bylaw. Bylaw number four-two-zero-three, two thousand and fourteen proposes to rezone twelve properties in various locations throughout the city that are currently legally non-conforming to the correct zone in which they're located in, and there were no written responses received.
Thank you. So, do we call for the... Any questions?
From the public, right? Your worship?
Yeah. Okay. So, seeing none, we move forward?
Yes.
So, item three, any reports? Correspondents and delegations? Nothing? Call first for... First time for comments? And a second time for comments? And a third time for comments? Thank you. So, a motion to close. Councillor Schuman, councillor Kenny, all in favor? Opposed? It's carried. Thank you. And we'll go back into our regular council meeting. So, item two, new councillor business. Councillor Malkinson.
Good morning, your worship.
Good morning.
I just wanted to report to council my hope to attend the People's First Meeting, attending, or sorry, at, near the DC Society for Community Living building this evening. It's at seven o'clock. You know, we had Mr. Johnson in, I think, about a month ago now that he was enthusiastic about getting council attendance to those, so that's one thing. And another thing, I suppose, I just noted that I could report off on was the, well, the things at the library are going well, and that the employees are going to be going into contract negotiation soon. So, that's all I have this morning, your worship.
Thank you. Yeah, I spoke to David Marshall on the weekend, and unfortunately, I'm leaving town tonight, so I'm not able to go, but we'll set it up for future, and really want to move forward on that request of a committee that he's looking to do, so I'll follow it up with him as, when I get back. Thank you for that. Item three, we have three sets of minutes from our regular meeting of February seventeenth, our special meeting of February twenty-fourth, and the special meeting of February twenty-fifth. Were there any errors or omissions in those minutes? Councillor Malkinson?
Your worship, I, in the meeting from February seventeenth, item nine-four under Mayor's Business, I did appreciate our recording secretary's efforts to highlight, well, maybe I'll just read from it. Mayor Bumstead thanked councillor Malkinson for attending the High on Ice Festival and Mayor's Challenge in Fort St. John with him. He noted his acute disappointment that their majestic ice sculpture was not crowned the championship entry. I am not sure that does it justice, your worship. I'd prefer awe-inspiring, or magnificent, or something like that. Either or would be fine.
Thank you for that. It was awe-inspiring and majestic. Were there any errors or omissions in the minutes? We have a motion to accept those minutes, please. Councillor Wilbur, councillor McFadden, all those in favor? Opposed? It's carried. Thank you. Any business arising from the minutes? Item five, five-one, we have correspondence, letter from Karen Goodings. Councillor Malkinson?
I moved that, gee, I'm trying to pull it up here, but I believe this is asking us for nominations, and I'm not certain that our council has any, hey? Just receive for information?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. That's what I moved.
Thank you. Seconded. Councillor Kenny, discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? It's carried. Thank you. Five-two, we have a letter from Mike Malin, the President of the Royal Canadian Legion. Councillor Kenny?
I think it was, I understand what they're doing, but I, it seems to lack information.
All right. So, they have an agreement with the Curling Club that they reached in order to continue to function or operate in the community, and they have the agreement with the Curling Club, who we have, the city has a lease with, and so it goes against our policy to extend the lease to someone else who we have the lease with. I think the gist of what Mike's concern is, is they're really struggling trying to maintain and function in their current method and manner, and so they're looking to see if they could, they have an office, small office space at the Curling Club that they use as well for their office, and they're looking to see if they can in some way solidify that. But I think if we could refer this back to us for contact with the Curling Club, because it certainly should be through them that the lease, or the agreement is extended through.
That was, that was my impression, too, your worship. I think that'd be a good way to go.
All right. So, if I can have a motion, we'll refer it back to the Curling Club, and we'll have a discussion? Thank you. Councillor Kenny, councillor Malkinson, discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? It's carried. Thank you. Item five-three, we have a letter from Connie Gray Eyes, the Spirit of the Peace Powwow Councillor Schuman?
I don't believe that we've sponsored the Powwow in Taylor previously, so I'll just move this for information.
Thank you. Councillor Malkinson, discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? It's carried. Thank you. Item five-four, we have a letter from Jenny Snyder, librarian, in regards to the Dawson Creek Municipal Public Library and some flooring options. Councillor Malkinson?
Your worship, I'd like to move that we accommodate the library board's, I'm not, no, I'm not in conflict, I don't believe, no, that's not the case. I'd like to move that we accommodate the library board's request.
Seconded. Councillor Kenny? Councillor Kenny?
So, this was already approved in the budget work on the library?
Jim?
Through your worship, the capital project to replace flooring at the, at the library has made it through your first cut, and it'll be going to the public for their comment. But a small amount, seventeen thousand dollar item for flooring behind the counters was not included, and so the library board is asking that that be included as well. Certainly, staff has no objection to that.
Makes sense.
In terms of process, should it be part of our budget deliberations, rather than passing a motion one off?
And I'm not sure. Through your worship, you don't have another budget meeting before the information is prepared for the public?
Okay.
So, it would be good if you gave a direction now?
All right. Good. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? It's carried. Thank you. Item five-five, we have a letter from Samantha Guebrow, from the Tourism Development Coordinator. Councillor Kenny?
Um, I would like to move that, that we allocate that, that funding to, to tourism Dawson Creek, to, to look at what, for the billboards and look at what, oh, wait, I'm in the wrong one, sorry. Sorry, sorry, sorry. I'm in the wrong, uh... Okay. I'll move that, I guess, where would we accommodate these people? Is there, do you have any suggestions on where we would accommodate these people?
Through your worship, actually, we don't even know exactly what they need, so if council was willing to refer this to staff, but with an expectation that you would not assess a fee for whatever is found for them, I'm sure we can work with tourism and find some spot. I just don't know exactly what their needs are. I don't know if they're talking about camping, or cots on the floor of the memorial, or any, I just don't know the answer to that question.
Or the O'Brien Gym, or...
Okay, so...
Sorry, did you want, was that a...
Yeah, I was going to make a motion that we would...
Moved by councillor Kenny, seconded by councillor Wilbur. Discussion? Councillor Malkinson?
The idea that it's referred back to staff to come back to council for its approval? Final approval?
If you wish, yes. Yeah, and I think there's some detail there in terms of where, and numbers of people, and all that, that they'll be developing, so that'll be brought back to us for information and decision. Further discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? It's carried. Thank you. Item five-six, we have a letter from Rhona Martin, Director of UBC, or, sorry, Director Rhona Martin on the UBC, President, in our regards to our membership. Councillor Schuman?
I move that we pay our UBC a membership fee.
Thank you. Seconded, councillor Wilbur. Discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? It's carried. Thank you.
Why do we, your worship, why do we move to do this every year?
I would assume it's an expenditure that we have to give validation and approval to on a, on a yearly basis, I would think.
But it's a comparatively small expenditure. I just wonder what makes it an exception.
Jim?
Through your worship, there's a longstanding practice of bringing forward the FCM invoice, the UBCM invoice, and the North Central Local Government Association invoice, and it's as much to raise the profile of the organizations as it is for your approval. You also build it into your budget, but just as an additional opportunity to speak about those organizations if anybody wishes. That's why it's brought forward.
It's like right now.
Any further discussion?
Do you have a question here?
All those, sorry, yes, go ahead, Charlie. Councillor Parslow, sorry.
I, why is this still PST exempt?
I'm sorry, I have no idea how PST regulations work. I was happy to be rid of them, and I'm sorry to have them back, but maybe Shelley can tell.
Through your worship, caught me off guard here. PST is usually applicable to materials and supplies, not to services, or memberships, or insurance, or things like that, so that's why it's exempt.
Thank you. Further discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? It's carried. Thank you. Letter from Arlene Thorpe, Volunteer Coordinator for Better at Home. Councillor Wilbur?
I'd like to make the motion that we continue our support with BC Transit for seniors bus ride program.
Thank you. Seconded by councillor McFadden. Discussion, oh, sorry, Jim?
Yeah, through your worship, the, the cost of this is shared between ourselves and BC Transit, and it's shared on the basis of service hours. So, we have built into our contract just over thirty service hours that can be used for community purposes, everything from SPCA fundraisers to Better at Home. So, as you would expect with a volunteer like Arlene, who is very committed to her cause, Better at Home has crept up those hours to the exclusion of other good and worthwhile purposes, so you might want to cap this at, say, twenty service hours, leaving, you know, at least ten or more available for somebody like the SPCA to do a Christmas card lean, or that sort of thing.
Thank you. Councillor McFadden?
So moved, your worship.
We're going to add, I agree to their request with a friendly amendment that we're going to add a cap of twenty hours on it?
That's correct.
Councillor Malkinson, second? Discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? It's carried. Thank you. We need separate approval on the motion itself. And on the motion itself, all those in favor? Opposed? It's carried. Thank you. So, we're a little ahead of time for our delegation, so we're going to move to item seven, seven-one, the report from Director of Corporate Administration regarding the Central Mountain Air promotional funding. Councillor Kenny?
I gotta pull it up, I'm going to read this. Oh, my, things lagging here. Here we go. Yes. So, I would like to move the recommendation that report number fourteen oh-three-seven from the Director of Corporate Administration regarding Central Mountain Air promotional funding be received, and further that tourism Dawson Creek be provided with the remaining funds, six thousand three hundred and thirty-four dollars and fifty-four cents, in order to promote the city of Dawson Creek on the billboards that are currently leased by the Dawson Creek and District Chamber of Commerce.
Thank you. Seconded, councillor Schuman, discussion?
So, for the benefit of the public and people listening in this, we had, when Central Mountain Air announced the additional flight into our community in November, we allocated twenty thousand dollars in an effort to assist with the promotion, working with the Chamber of Commerce. As a result of that discontinuation of that service today, is it today? Anyway, we've got that addition, there was an additional, about six thousand dollars left in that original allocation of twenty thousand dollars, so we're going to, I'll move that forward into some further promotional stuff, so...
Just, your worship, just on that, what you said there, this is just to promote the city of Dawson Creek, is that, is that what I'm seeing here? Will it be, I'm curious about what kind of initiative, or will it just be general advertising for the city at the entrances to, you know, that, or sorry, at the spots that have been identified in the report here? Yeah?
Through your worship, the funds will be provided to tourism Dawson Creek, and they will come up with an advertising that's suitable to the city, and the mayor will have approval on that. Depending on the timing, the Economic Development Committee may also want some input on that.
May want to weigh in? Okay.
Yeah, we have the signs in place, and so it made sense for us to be able to leverage and use them if we've got the lease in place for them, so...
A comment?
Yes. Yes, go ahead, councillor Parslow.
The location of these three billboard is quite proximate to the city of Dawson Creek. I fail to see how this will promote tourism with people almost on our doorstep. I would, I was going to, unless I could be persuaded that this is somehow going to leverage something that I think people are already in our proximate area, I would be motion against this. We have enough need for money for other things, and I can see very little value in this.
Thank you. Councillor Malkinson?
I, I agree with councillor Parslow's comments. I appreciate what he said, your worship.
Thank you. Further discussion? Councillor Schuman?
So, I would see them as maybe promoting different, different things that are going to be coming up in the city, and bring awareness as people are coming through. I'm voting in favor of this. It's six thousand dollars, we've got the sign sitting there. I think it's a good use of, of those signs that are leased for the year regardless, so I'll be voting in favor.
Thank you. Further discussion? Councillor Kenny?
I'll be voting in favor as well, because I'm, I'm sure that, that we could find some, some, some good, good advertising for our, for our city through, through these billboards that would promote us as a friendly, welcoming community, coming into our community. That's how I look at it, and so I, I think it's great, and I'll definitely be...
Thank you. Further discussion? Councillor Malkinson?
I do mean this respectfully, and I don't want to beat a dead horse, but, you know, we definitely do have, you know, signs at the entrances to our community welcoming people to Dawson Creek, so, um, signs of the nature that have been described, I think, would be redundant, so I don't think I can support it for those reasons.
Thank you. Further discussion? You know, we've got the lease, for me, it's, we've got the lease in place, we could leverage and utilize them. If we don't, we're still going to be paying for it. I like the idea, not necessarily even tourism, but even some events. We've got the World Women's Under Eighteen Championships coming here in two thousand and sixteen. So, there's me, right? There's me.
All the way out there.
And so, to me, that's an opportunity for us to be able to leverage some of those specific events, and we've paid for the sign, so I like the idea of it. Anyway, any further discussion? Ready for the question? All those in favor? Opposed?
I'm opposed.
Councillor Malkinson, councillor Parslow. Thank you. Item seven point two, we have a report from the Director of Infrastructure Sustainable Development, Shore Water Phase Two. Councillor Schuman?
I move that report number fourteen dash one forty from the Director of Infrastructure and Sustainable Development regarding the Shore Water Phase Two consultation outline be received, and further that council approve the communications and consultation outline as presented.
Thank you. Seconded, councillor McFadden. Discussion?
I have some comments to make here.
Yes, councillor Parslow?
If I may speak to...
Yep, go ahead, please.
Thank you. I was very concerned about this, in that the purpose of the Shore Water Phase Two, as I understood it, was to communicate with the taxpayer public about the cost implications associated with pipeline development, which came out of the Phase One. It seems to me that this primary goal could be lost in the work that seems to be planned promoting conservation. Now, obviously, I'm not against conservation, so I, I'm wondering what comments our staff here, there's, it seems in some of the plans, they're seizing on some, the conference here that, working with meat, and I have no problems with working with meat either, but I, I think the primary focus seems to be somewhat subsumed by conservation. And my second comment, which is linked to this, is that, and I think I heard councillor Schuman speak about this, oh, last week was it?
In our closed meeting?
This, Marshall, in the work, I would, I really want to support the fact that we don't just focus on the cost of pipeline, we focus also on the cost of pumping, and all the needed, needed adjustments to our treatment plan, so we have a full picture of the implications of the pipeline. Thank you.
Thank you. Jim?
Through your worship, the council's direction around Phase Two was actually not limited to just the financial implications. Councillor Malkinson pointed that out at your meeting last week, and I've reviewed the minutes, and actually, there was a series of aspirations council had to inform as wide a range of the public as possible about what you've done in response to their last set of input, new information, for instance, the Bear Hole Lake Pilot Project, as well as the financial implications. Council had expressed a desire to involve not just current property-owning taxpayers, but the wider community, and particularly, a younger audience, so this recommendation is meant to be responsive to that. That's a different conversation than if you just bring in taxpayers with their tax notices and talk to them about implications of taxation. And finally, there is no, there was no direction to prepare scenarios that built in things like pumping costs. They're mentioned as a footnote, but it's virtually impossible to predict them without engineered drawings. In fact, what we were directed to do was bring back scenarios on three levels of expenditures, the amount proposed by the proponents, and two other, what we would submit are more realistic scenarios, so we can change horses again at this meeting, if that's what council wishes, but our understanding of the current direction is that it's a broader process, you'd like to involve youth, and the financial scenarios are going to be tagged at three scenarios of capital costs, which you approved specifically by resolution.
Thank you. Councillor Schuman?
So, I'm in favor of the motion as it stands, but I did, I did bring that up last week, because I feel that we're going to put out the cost of the pipelines in these three scenarios, but regardless of how many billions of gallons of new water we could bring to our community through such a pipeline, we're, we're not going to get any more water through the system because of, because of our system, and so in order to get to where certain people want to get to with the pipeline, it would include an even more, like another large amount of money just to make our system, you know, be able to bring that water in, and so I, I brought that up because I believe that it, just giving the pipeline cost isn't the true cost of what it would be. It would certainly, in order to utilize that water, if the residents still thought that was necessary after receiving the information, it would also be another very large expenditure to, to even treat it and pump it and distribute it in the community. But I'm, I'm in favor of this, this consult, this consultation work, and, and it should be good. Bringing in the youth, I think, is, is something that we need to do more of, so...
Thank you. Councillor Wilbur?
I think Jim actually touched on it with the subnote that's going to be in there, that there are things that are a part of that cost, so I think maybe that covers that if, maybe Jim can clarify, through your worship, is, that's what that subnote is, is saying that this is not what's excluded from that price, or...
That would be exactly correct, your worship. The concept is to present just the construction cost of a pipeline based on three scenarios, again, keeping in mind that you don't know what the cost of that pipeline is until you've tendered it and it's been awarded, but just based on numbers that have been floated in the community, starting with the proponents' number of fifty-seven million. So, yes, that will be plus, plus, plus. That will be plus operational cost, that will be plus any needed changes in the treatment facility, that'll be plus any needed changes to the distribution system. But the concept was to give citizens an idea of the magnitude of what we're talking about, the magnitude of the effect. So, the whole question is how price-sensitive the community is on this matter, whether price is actually an object for them or not, but believe me, when you see those figures, if price sensitivity exists, even the smallest number, the proponents' number, is going to have an enormous impact on water rates, and tremendous limiting impact on the city's ability to address other urgent and pressing needs, so I, if there is, if there's price sensitivity, it's going to show up at that, at that lower number. If there's no price sensitivity, it doesn't matter how many plus, plus, pluses you add. If people's view is, it doesn't matter what it costs, we have to do this, then it doesn't matter what it costs, we have to do this. You know, those are the, those are sort of the lines in the sand around this thing.
Thank you. Discussion? Councillor McFadden?
I just, to recap, as we speak, the, the water lines in the city are full of water, and they're coming out at, so, some sort of a PSI, so if we had a pipeline that ended at the Kiskatna that was ten feet in diameter, so what? We still can't put any more water through the system. Is that what you're saying? Is that what you're saying, Councilor Schuman? Yeah, and I quite agree. The treatment plant is only capable of treating so much water in a day, so, it's a moot point almost. Thank you. Do I have that correct? Is the staff, maybe, is that the way it is?
Through your worship, the system is...
Full.
As we speak at this moment, the reservoirs are full, and water is running over the weir. And the amount you have is sufficient, not just for this population, but there is reserve capacity in the system for further use. That doesn't in any way speak to a future situation where your population doubled, for instance, that's not, I'm talking about your current population.
Thank you. Councilor Malkinson?
Thank you, your worship. I'm seeing is this additional work that was included is largely the work of the firm that we've had do the first stage. I was, I was wondering if anybody could possibly speak to, there was just a little bit that I was confused about, the host, Shore Water Talks, open house during the water conference. I was kind of confused about the, the format of that, or how exactly it would roll out. I was wondering if there was anybody here that could speak to that, or not, your worship.
So, are you speaking about the youth congress work?
No, just, just how exactly it'll be, will it be sort of like, sort of like the, oh gee, the conference that we had last year with all the residents, that will be the summation of the, or where the...
Consultation?
Consultation, yes, where the, you know, residents will come and we'll have a panel, it'll be in the same format as last time?
Okay, so, the recommendation is you start with the trade fair, where you'll be manning a booth, you'll have information packages to hand out, you'll be pitching your, your open house during Drinking Water Week, which would be May 8th, whereas the trade show is April 11th to 13th. Then there'd be a newsletter sent out to all homes, again, used to promote, provide information and promote the May 8th meeting. May 8th, you would have an open house during the water conference, that would have panel presentation, we're talking about having handheld, held voting devices, so you could provide real-time information on questions that you would propose, put up on the, on the, the board. That would be, our aspiration would be to include youth on that panel, and it would kick off Shore Water Talks. You'd have a period during May where you did community conversations, so not just gathering everybody up, but actually having a video that advocates could take, hold their own little neighborhood meeting, maybe a block party, show the video, the video would be set up so that you could pause it and ask questions, try to do that through the month of May. There'd be a survey at the end of all that, and all that input would be gathered and presented to council. And then, of course, that might or might not move council towards a decision point. So, we're talking about fairly extensive effort, starting at the trade fair and not wrapping up until June, basically.
Thank you. Further discussion? So, for me, the two points that I think are really important are the, from what the process that went through last year was the financial component, about how, we need to provide some detail to the community and the residents about, right now, how long is a piece of string? And we need to answer that question in terms of what it is, the financial components are going to be, and, and the other piece of that I've heard is people saying, well, industry will help pay for it. Well, I think we need to have that conversation and understand that, some clarity around who is actually going to be paying for it. And then the second piece to me is, we, we entered this a couple of years ago with, through the drought, and people were really concerned about, do we have an adequate supply for the long term, both for growth in our community and even sustaining what we have today? So, I think those are really good conversations for us to answer and provide that detail and information to the public and engage the public in that. And for me, it's particularly the financial component. So, I like the idea of moving forward in terms of, we need to have that interaction, that discussion, that conversation, and follow through with more information so people can make that informed decision. Are you ready for the question? All those in favor? Opposed? It's Kerry. Thank you. So, we're going to now get back, if we count, to our delegations. I apologize, we're a few minutes late. So, our first delegation is Arden Smith, Jane Harper, and Francis Pope are here from the South Peace Community Resources Society, and I wonder if they're here? I think so, they're outside. Thank you.
What is up there now?
Yes, absolutely, absolutely.
We're waiting for the chair of the committee to arrive, and she's not here, so we're kind of going, okay.
Well, we're okay with that. How are you?
Good.
Welcome to, I'm a hugger, so you got a, how are you? Good to see you. So, we'll come up, welcome.
Still doing that, huh?
Probably. You're welcome. Glad to have you here. Whereas March 8th, 2014 is International Women's Day, the highlight of International Women's Week. International Women's Week 2014 begins with the trade fair on Saturday, March 8th, 2014. Each year at this time, Canadians celebrate progress towards equality for women and their full participation, reflect on current challenges, and consider future steps in achieving equality for all women in all aspects of their lives. And whereas the government of Canada's theme for 2014 is inspiring change, women's equality has made positive gains, but the world is still unequal. International Women's Day celebrates the social, political, and economic achievements of women, while focusing world attention on areas requiring further action. This theme encourages advocacy for women's equality and vigilance, inspiring positive change. And whereas International Women's Day is a global day, celebrating the economic, political, and social achievements of women past, present, and future, this special day provides an opportunity to celebrate progress made, to advance equality for women, and to access, assess the challenges that remain. And now, therefore, I do hereby proclaim March 8th, 2014, as International Women's Day in Dawson Creek. So, thank you so much, ladies, for...
Thank you. I just want to talk for just a second about, we tend to think, oh, we've come a long way, and, and, you know, things are equal now, and, and I just looked at compensation for executive directors in the province of B.C. for social service agencies, for example, and there, you'd think there'd be a lot more equality, and there's a lot more women in those positions, and it's still not equal. Men still get paid more for nonprofit organizations working on equality for all people than women do. So, we still have a ways to go, you know, and I'm sure if City Hall looked at the wages that are paid for city workers across the province, that there would probably be disparity there between, you know, men get paid for those same positions. So, it's, it's still there, and we need to keep it in our mind, and we need to continue to work towards that daily. We need to raise strong, brave, young women, and, you know, the 60s, we think, all that happened back then, and we're there, and we're not there yet. So, do you want to talk, do you want to say anything about Saturday? Exciting, second, second trade fair, and it's got a lot of attention in our street.
So, basically, it is a trade fair, and we've kind of tried to cover bases from youth to adults, as well as covering women in trades, women in the community, women, Aboriginal women, and, and kind of trying to target all the different areas that we see representative in the women in our community, and our goal really is to highlight what is out there, as well as to offer opportunities for the women in our community to become engaged. I moved to Dawson Creek in September, and I found it really difficult to find things in the community to do, and so I think part of this for us is to get women who maybe are a little bit more disconnected, to have an opportunity to see what is out there, and to connect with other women, and to connect with organizations in the city, or recreation in the city, and have an opportunity. So, we do have workshops that are going to run, we definitely have a yoga workshop that's going to happen, and hopefully, a Zuma workshop as well. And as, at the beginning of the event, we have gift bags, and the, the main staple of those gift bags is bread and roses, because the idea is that women need bread as sustenance, and they need roses as a subsidy, and so those are two things that are very important to women, and we want to encourage those in women of our community.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
See you all there.
Thanks for coming.
Item 6.2? Yes, Brendan?
Through your worship, we did get a phone call from Kevin Nobok, and he is ill, so we won't be able to make it, and Danny Shields is scheduled for next week, so we'll move on to 6.4.
Thank you. So, I just want to speak briefly to Kevin and Barb Nobok from Valley Gardens, because I did meet with them about two weeks ago, and talked about the issue that he is so passionate about, his whole life has been in agricultural area. They did make a presentation last week to the Peace River Regional District, and we referred the issue back through to the Agriculture Advisory Board, and so I'd really like to, when I spoke to Kevin, I'd said that if they could come and give us a presentation of how important the topic it is, and we would, I would like to move it to our Agriculture Advisory Board through the Peace River Regional District, and, and then be able to help promote it from that basis. So, we'll wait till he comes in two weeks. And I met with Danny as well, and so they're coming forward with their plans for this year. So, our next item, 6.4, we have Maggie Marsland and Jay Morrison from Spectra Energy and attendants regarding the update on their West Coast Connector Gas Transmission project. Welcome, good morning.
Thank you. We have a kind of a PowerPoint presentation. How do I go about pressing buttons?
We'll just set that up for you, and the mayor will move, or else he'll talk to you...
No, I'm not moving, I'm staying right here.
All right, goodbye. We'll see you later.
So, obviously, I have to say something in advance of your presentation while you're setting it up, and it is, on a personal note to Jay, obviously, congratulations, what a cool, cool time in your guys' family to celebrate the brothers' success on the world stage at the Olympics, and we hope that you'll pass that on to him in terms of, from us as the city of Dawson Creek, how proud we are of his accomplishment.
Yeah, we're just as proud as Fort St. John.
Yeah.
No, Daniel would first to say, it's, it's the whole region who's supported him so much, his whole career, so, thank you for that, and I'll pass on the message.
Absolutely.
This'll take the usual five minutes to warm up.
You might get tired of swinging off his boatails, too, don't you?
Nice remark, that sets a tone right there.
I'll tell you why I say that. Here's, here's a personal, I, we grew up speedskaters, my brother and I, my family. My brother was...
The star.
The star, the national and international, he skated in the 70s. So, if anybody ever said, oh, are you the speedskater, the bumpstead speedskater, I'd always say, yeah, because he wasn't around to take the credit for it, so...
Yeah. No, it's, it's all good. We're so proud of him.
Yeah.
Good for you, that's just great.
It's been so fun following him on Twitter, like...
Stage is yours.
Great, thank you very much, Mayor and Council, for inviting Spectra Energy today to do a short presentation. My name is Maggie Marsland, I'm with the Canadian LNG portion of Spectra Energy, here to talk to you about the West Coast Connector Gas Transmission Project, and I'm with Jay Morrison that you all know, who's, who's almost famous.
We knew him, we knew him before the medals.
So, last year about this time, my colleague, Franka Pichucci, was here. Unfortunately, she couldn't make it today, so you have to settle for me instead, and we both talk just as fast, so... So, what we want to talk to you about is just give you an update on what, how things are going with our project, and when we were here a year ago, we didn't actually have a name for our project, so it is the West Coast Connector Gas Transmission Project, going from northeastern B.C. out to Prince Rupert. So, we're here today to give you an update on that project and to answer any questions you may have. So, as you are well aware, Spectra Energy has deep rural roots in northern, in all of B.C. We've been here for 55 years, and we're a well-respected name because of that 55 years of safe, reliable operations. We believe that with this project, we're ideally located to facilitate growth in northern B.C. due to our existing main line and gathering lines, and we also have access to premium natural gas markets. We have solid relationships with First Nations communities and local landowners, and internally, we make sure we provide safe, reliable operations with our operations management system and our compliance programs. So, the West Coast Connector Gas Transmission Project, the first thing I wanted to point out, which unfortunately, I keep forgetting to put on the slide, is that it's an 850-kilometer route, it starts in northeastern B.C. in Cypress area, going, coming down towards Hudson's Hope, crossing over the Rockies, and taking a northerly route across the interior plateau, coming down at Prince Rupert. So, this is the most northerly of the proposed natural gas pipelines to service LNG facilities out of all the ones that have been proposed. Our proposed project has two pipelines in one single corridor, which is also another unique factor about this project. So, this actually reduces the environmental footprint, because in a, in a slightly larger-than-normal cor, right-of-way width, we're actually able to put two pipes in the ground, so we have a smaller environmental footprint than if we just had two separate pipes in two separate areas. So, we started looking at the route about two years ago, and we had a conceptual route, and we've been fine-tuning that route over the last two years, based on First Nations and stakeholder input, as well as through our environmental studies. We are in the environmental review process, and we hope to be able to get to, make a final investment decision on our project by 2016, with construction to start shortly thereafter and in service by the end of the decade. So, the environmental assessment process, well, we started the process in October 2012 by submitting a project description to the Environmental Assessment Office. We had our application information requirements document approved in September of 2013, and that document called an AIR is basically just an outline of what the application document will look like. So, we are preparing to file our application this month, that would be the end of our quarter one, so look forward to an 8,000-page document coming to a mailbox near you. And so, good morning. So, as part of that application, we're going to be also submitting our permits to the Oil and Gas Commission. So, as I mentioned, we do have two pipelines, and so we are only submitting the oil and gas application permits for one of the set, one of the pipelines right now, because we only have one partner at this point for our two routes. And I did like to say, so BG Group is our partner that we have to go up to Prince Rupert, and we are actively seeking a second partner for our second pipe. So, our proposed route, as I mentioned, it starts up in Cypress, comes down towards Hudson's Hope, comes down to the Pine Pass, starts going up the Pine Pass, but we don't, we actually, at La Morey, leave the Pine River area and go up and over the mountains down to Mackenzie. There's just too much other activity going on along the Pine River with an oil pipeline, two gas pipelines, a transmission line, and a highway, and the Por River, so we didn't want to put any more, squeeze any more resource of development into that narrow corridor. So, that's why we go north, and then we go into, down to Mackenzie, go north, just north of Mackenzie, and then we go across the interior plateau, up and over towards north of Babine Lake, up the north side of the Babine River, out to Cranberry Junction on Highway 37, for those of you who've been up towards Stewart, and then we have two options that take us down to Prince Rupert. I wanted to point out that we do have one option that we've now removed from our route. We did have an all-root option from Cranberry Junction that would take us down to Prince Rupert. We always knew it was very sensitive, because it was going through the Koots Mateen Grizzly Bear Conservation Area, so we never actually did a lot of work on it, but we put it there just in case we would, there was no possibility of going with a subsea route. We have explored the subsea routes, have confirmed we can put a pipe on the bottom of the ocean, and as a result, there is no need to even worry about the grizzly bears. So, we do have two proposed routes, one that starts at Kitsault, that takes an ocean route down to Prince Rupert, and the one that starts at Nisoga Gulf that takes us down to Prince Rupert.
Sorry, may I ask, so through the, you cross through the traditional territories of the Nishka?
Yes. Yes, and our, our Nisoga, oh, can, actually skip back a slide, because I can never remember which one, yeah, the Nisoga Gulf route actually goes through the Nishka treaty lands, so that's in essence private land, so we have to seek permission and approvals through the Nishka government, Nishkalism government, rather than the provincial government, so we actually have to submit another set of approvals to them.
Yeah, to go north, the way you are, you couldn't...
Yeah, if you go north, the way you are, you couldn't, it doesn't matter which way you go, you're going to hit through the Nishka, right?
You end up in the Nishka, yeah. But we've had a very collaborative working relationship with Nishka, and it's been going very well, our negotiations. So the marine route, one thing that's always important to point out, is Spectra Energy actually has experience putting pipelines on the bottom of oceans. We actually were, as West Coast, as West Coast Energy, built the pipeline to Vancouver Island. So we have people on staff who have actually done this work recently, I think it was about 20 years ago that that work was done. So I think that puts us ahead of our competition, having that experience working in a subsea environment. So we know how to do it safely, and we know how to do it so that we take care of our marine resources. So things that we do, we're doing in the assessing in the marine environment, we're doing some surveying, so geophysical work, to survey the bottom of the, to create a subsurface profile of the bottom of the ocean. We're doing some geotechnical work, which is like drilling, we're doing sampling to test, to make sure what is, what is the bottom of the ocean, what is it made out of, right? And then we're also doing biological studies on the shorelines and subtitle zones, so we can make sure that our approaches as we go down into the ocean and come up at Ridley Island or Prince Rupert, we make sure we've managed those, we've taken into those environmental considerations. And we also have this really funky thing called a remote operated vehicle, and I haven't seen it yet, but I sure want to. But basically, it's a little crab that goes down to the bottom of the ocean and goes along the bottom of the ocean and actually takes pictures, so we can actually see what's going on down there, we're not actually just relying on modeling or, or, you know, other techniques. So it's the combination of all those things that makes sure we can assess that marine environment. And then, of course, we have stakeholder input, and the fishermen in Prince Rupert have been an amazing resource for us to learn where crab, crab migration corridors are and how to manage that. So it is the combination of all those things that'll make this, the marine route a success. On our land route, we have been busy since last winter with field studies. We are going to be continuing with field studies again this summer, so we've done work on fisheries, aquatics, and wetlands, wildlife and birds, soils and vegetation, hydrology and terrain, as well as archaeological and traditional land use studies. And in all this work, we've had Aboriginal participation, so we've had over 3,000-person days of Aboriginal participation on our field crews, and that not only provides Aboriginal employment opportunities, but also to provide some of that traditional knowledge that they carry with them as individuals, to share that with the people on our team, so it becomes more of a growth opportunity for everybody. So compressor stations, when you have an 850-kilometer pipeline with two pipes, you need to have approximately five compressor stations, so that's what we're targeting for right now. They're each located about 150 to 250 kilometers apart. We have one located at the start of our line, which is right at the confluence of the Cameron and Blair, Cameron River and Blair Creek. Our second one is located north of Mackenzie. Third one is on the plateau between Mackenzie and Taca Landing. The fourth one is north of Babine Lake, and the fifth one will be where we enter the ocean, so either at Kitsault or Nisoga Gulf.
Powered by coal generation?
They're going to be powered by the natural gas that we're bringing through. So business opportunities, very important topic for all the stakeholders, we've hired a manager of technical workforce strategies, Kim Hogstad, and she's been coming around to the communities, and she's very instrumental in linking our prime contractor to local businesses. And as part of that process, she's established a vendor registration database that is on our website, Energy for B.C. website, so we do encourage all the businesses to go there and sign up, because we do use this database, along with the local knowledge, to actually try to find, make sure that all the right people are getting sent all the right information packages. For example, we're doing some geotechnical drilling this winter, or in the spring, and we're actually looking to hire local drillers, drilling companies, to do that work for us. So we really encourage any businesses to get signed up for that database.
Maggie, is there any way we could have, can you come and give us a presentation on the project and how she's developed it and on the database and all of that, for the benefit of council and our local community?
Yes, absolutely, yeah. We can, she just started about six months ago, so she's just getting, getting started, but we are meeting individually with people, but she is developing a strategy on how we're going to manage both local, local employment opportunities through contractors and then also business opportunities as well.
Yeah, we'd love to, if possible, to have her come as a delegation.
Sure.
Thank you.
So we are anticipating we're going to have 4,000 jobs over the course of the construction and 60 permanent jobs, and of course, there will be some indirect jobs affiliated with both construction and post-construction. So our commitment to our communities, it's very important for us to, making sure we're welcome in the communities, which means we need to have open dialogue, and that's one of our core values. We want to continue to collaborate with communities and with First Nations to get their input and feedback, and we recognize that both Aboriginal peoples and local communities have, have historical knowledge, and have that local knowledge that be able to help us make sure that we're putting a line in the best location. And we have a local presence on the ground, so all of our community coordinators reside in northern B.C. We have two in Fort St. John, two in Prince George, and two out in Terrace, so we make a point that it's easy for us to come to the communities to meet with people. So here's our contact information, we do have a toll-free number, we have our website, energyforbc.ca, and we also want to be invited out to communities to participate. On the previous slide, that was Frank and I last summer out at Nakosli, helping them, helping deconstruct a baseball diamond seating that was, that was dangerous. So, you know, we like to get out and get involved with the communities as much as we can. So thank you very much for the presentation, and if we have a few minutes, I can take any questions you may have.
Councillor Malkinson?
I was just wondering what the total project cost was, did I see that in the presentation?
No, the pipeline itself is going to cost somewhere between four and six billion dollars. We're still working on, on that cost estimate. And the plant, I believe, it's BG's plant, so I don't have specifics, but I believe it's around 20 billion.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's a billion with a B?
That's a billion with a B, yes.
I was just wondering, perhaps I missed it too, but why would you build a trench and then put in two pipelines rather than just one?
Because we, we see the opportunities to export to Asia, and so we want to, we may not build a second pipeline if we don't get a second partner. We would only be building, and it wouldn't be one big trench with two pipes, they would be built as two separate, two separate trenches for each pipe, so that would only be if and when we had both partners, would be built both pipes.
Oh, I see, you just do it, if you have a partner, you just do them at the same time then, rather than?
Yeah. Yeah, timing still has to be worked out if we find a second partner, yeah.
Right, thank you, appreciate that.
Yeah.
The LNG that's been talked about at Kitsault?
Kitsault, yeah.
They've already got a natural gas provider?
No, that's a different project altogether, so yeah, there is a gentleman who owns, who owns the village, who is trying to get an LNG plant established there, we are not affiliated with, with him.
I was just curious if he already had, if he was already signed up with someone for that?
Yeah, I couldn't answer that question, yeah.
I just, I recall knowing that there was something happening out at Kitsault.
Right.
Anything further?
Question, May Mayor?
Yes, go ahead, Councillor Parslow.
I noticed that out of the 4,000 construction jobs, 50 permanent jobs, what's the distribution of the 50 permanent jobs, where would they be located?
There will be a few positions at every compressor station, somewhere between four and six positions at every compressor station, and then the remainder of the jobs would probably be Charlie Lake office, or probably some in Prince George office, and then probably some in Calgary and Vancouver.
Thank you.
Councillor Malkinson?
Oh, no, it's fine, it's been answered.
Thank you.
Great, thank you very much.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you very much for coming today, and we appreciate the update, we appreciate the information, and as I say, we look forward to keeping in terms of up-to-date as the development of the project over the next couple of years, and we'd really like to have Kim attend if possible and
Yeah, absolutely.
Get an update for our community and our local business community and understanding of that procurement model.
Model, okay, absolutely, yes, we'll get her to come.
Thank you.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. So we'll take a five-minute break and move back onto our agenda. Yeah, it's so good. So we'll call our meeting back to order, we were finished off on our Sure Water item, let me find it, seven point three, no, sorry, seven two. So we now move to item seven point three, we have a report from our Director of Infrastructure Sustainable Development. Councillor Malkinson?
I move that we receive this report from the Director of Infrastructure and Sustainable Development regarding the correspondence on development permit 1330, and that this development permit number 1330 be approved.
Thank you, seconded by Councillor Schuman, discussion? All those in favor, opposed, Councillor McFadden opposed, Carrie, thank you. Item, item seven point four, we have a report from, thank you, our Chief Financial Officer in regards to the Climate Action Revenue Incentive Program. Councillor Schuman?
I'm just scrolling, scrolling, scrolling. I'd move that report number 14-041 from the Chief Financial Officer regarding the Climate Action Revenue Incentive Program, carip, report be received and approved as presented, further that staff proceed with securing a carbon, carbon offset service agreement for future council approval, so that the city can maintain its carbon-neutral status in accordance with the provincial regulations.
Thank you, seconded by Councillor Malkinson, discussion? Jim, do you want to give us just a quick overview of the changes for this?
Certainly, the existing decision of council was to purchase your offsets through the Pacific Carbon Trust. You worked through a workshop with some consultants trying to choose a provider of offsets, but the Pacific Carbon Trust has been disbanded, and so they're no longer available as an offset provider. They've given us a list of possible alternative suppliers, but we're working through a due diligence process on that to select one of them, and haven't made that decision yet. So the report speaks only to that you will be purchasing the offset, but doesn't name the provider. However, the pricing is relatively common amongst all of the suppliers that were recommended by the outgoing Pacific Carbon Trust, and it still results in a net value to you of about $6,000. The refund on gas tax that you're, or on carbon tax that you are eligible for because you are carbon-neutral is still costs less than, or is still more than the cost of the offsets, so it's still a net revenue for you.
Thank you. Councillor Schuman?
So I seem to recall, in some of that work that we've done, we were going to focus on like the gold standard of offsets, will that be still something that we're aspiring to?
Through your worship, the, as you may recall, the consultant's opinion to you, actually you wouldn't recall, because you weren't in that meeting, but your predecessor would recall, there was no gold standard provider, including Pacific Carbon Trust, none met the full gold standard criteria. That is still the same for the alternate providers that are available. What we're doing is making sure that the projects funded by the offset provider are at least visible and accountable. We had the conversation the last time that you're not interested in putting money towards, for instance, Siberian tiger habitat that you want, a little higher standard than that, so we're still working through that, and we're getting some assistance from some of the folks who were in Pacific Carbon Trust that are now in the Ministry of the Environment.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you. Further discussion?
Yes, I have some comments. This whole concept of buying offsets has been described as being equivalent to the former practice of a church to buy indulgences for sin, and that's my opinion about it, but the question I have, I don't know if you may have heard anything, or if staff has, about the future of this in light of the significant increase in carbon loading that is associated with the LNG project, what, and the provincial government's, if the provincial government had any thoughts, you know, about abandoning its overall goals for carbon loading in province in light of its support of LNG?
I haven't had any conversation, Councillor Parslow, about it.
Staff know anything?
Through your worship, there is widespread speculation that the province's targets for 2020 cannot be met if LNG plants come online, but there's no message resolution about that. Regarding the regime they've set up around communities that have committed to become carbon neutral, there is talk that at some point they may change the requirements in the agreement from purchasing offsets to putting the same amount of money into projects that will demonstrably reduce your carbon emissions in the same way your own internal fund does, but that change, that change has not been made, and so to qualify for the carbon tax refund, you still have to be carbon neutral through purchase of offset, they haven't changed that.
Yeah, personally, I would like that development. Just one last question, if I may, and just my, excuse my ignorance here, but does the provincial government have a scheme like this so that it is carbon neutral for its operations?
No, your worship, it does not.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Further discussion? Ready for the question, all in favor, opposed? It's Carrie, thank you. So item eight, eight point one, we have zoning amendment bylaw number 4203, 2014. Councillor Malkinson?
I'll move it to your worship, I, my computer's just frozen here, but I don't think there is an attachment for it, is there?
No, there isn't, no.
They're agreeing.
I'll move it, your worship.
Moved, seconded by Councillor Wilber, discussion? All those in favor, opposed? It's Carrie. Item eight point two, we have a report number 14-030 from the Chief Financial Officer regarding our loan authorization bylaw for the sewer truck line. Councillor Malkinson?
I'd like to move that we receive this report from our Chief Financial Officer regarding the loan authorization bylaw number 4199, and further that loan authorization bylaw number 4199, 2014, be given first three readings, and that staff be directed to forward the loan authorization bylaw to the ministry for approval, and further that the deadline for elector response forms be set at at least 30 days after the second advertisement is published, and further that the elector response form attached to this report be approved.
Seconded by Councillor Schuman, discussion? Councillor McFadden?
Thank you, your worship. Should this bylaw subsequently be enacted, and we go ahead and borrow the money, what would be the effect on the current sewer and water rates for the residents in the city, right, going forward?
So I asked for a little bit of detail on that from our CAO through the CFO, think, and I've got the message from Friday, but I think our current sewer charge is about 14.80, $14.80 bimonthly, every two months. This borrowing, if it's at 8.5 million, would take it up to about 31.20 or 31.50 in that range, so it's, in essence, it's going to more than double the sewer charge for us.
The infrastructure charge?
The sewer charge, sorry.
Yeah, through your worship, it's, it's a rate increase to the fixed infrastructure charge, the variable rate won't change.
So for a, for standard residential connection, that'll be about $100 a year.
Excellent. Councillor Malkinson?
So we'll be communicating this to the public as soon as we can, hey?
Yes. Through your, through your worship, our recommendation is that you're, you're assuming that you approve the readings of the loan authorization bylaw, assuming the ministry approves it, and assuming that there isn't sufficient counter petition from the citizens in September, we'll bring you a recommendation for a new infrastructure charge to take effect for 2015.
Thank you. Councillor Malkinson?
Yeah, well, I thank our administrator for that, you know, this, this piece of work is vital, you know, especially given the volatile weather that we've been seeing over the last few years, you know, it's, it's something that we have to do, but I You know, it's, it's something that we have to do, but I, I just think that the sooner that we can make people aware that this proposal's going on, the easier it will be for them to handle or make preparations for the, for that kind of a change.
Thank you. Further discussion? Counselor McFadden?
I heard, I think somebody in staff said that it could be as late as June until this is actually finalized. Is that correct? Because if that's the case, that's cutting the construction season down pretty slim.
Okay, Shelley or Brenda, do you want to speak to the timing of the loan authorization?
Through your worship, so with any loan authorization bylaw that the city puts forward, the electorate has to have the opportunity to give their opinion on whether the city goes forward with it. So today is the first three readings and then I believe it has to go to the ministry for approval to say that the bylaw meets all the requirements of the ministry. It comes back, then administration has to advertise it, and then it goes for a alternate electoral approval, which is, how long does that last, Brenda?
Thirty days after the second advertisement.
Thirty days. Once we get the approval from the electorate, then it has to go back to the ministry after adoption by council. And then you can go forward with the project because the funding is in place. So it's a long, lengthy process for sure.
Yeah, well, that's my point. I mean, it could be June before this is actually a done deal. That's, is that going to give enough construction time in this season to do the job? Should it be approved?
Through your worship, so what we would do is concurrently tender the project. As you saw in an email last week, we basically finalized the deal with CN regarding access. The engineering's nearly complete. We would put the tender package out. The tender package would be conditional upon receiving these approvals. And so we would be looking to have the approval and the award of tender be at, basically at the same time. So June's kind of the extremity. We would hope to have this done in May, but in any event, we would hope to start construction no later than June.
Thank you.
Yeah, this, really, the timeframes, again, really impact our, the decision around holding or moving forward with the federal infrastructure funding that may be available to us that we've applied to. And by moving ahead with the project, the method in which you get federal infrastructure approval is, does the project meet the criteria and do you demonstrate the financial need? So if by moving it ahead, we would eliminate ourselves from the opportunity of getting any federal infrastructure funding for the project because we've demonstrated the financial capacity to do it. So anyway, that's the, that's the hard decision about this one is if we wait for the decision around the federal government, which would come potentially in May or June or July, then it would, it would eliminate the construction from this year, right? We just, we just could not proceed and get it done if we hold back for that federal funding. And so we, and that we don't know whether we're going to get any or not.
That's a big point, I think, your worship.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Jim?
Yeah, similarly, if a sufficient number of your citizens petition requiring a referendum, it'll be impossible to accommodate a referendum and have construction in this season. That would also cause at least a one-year delay in the project and, you know, potentially longer if you couldn't pass the referendum.
Just a few questions, if I may?
Yes?
Just, just to verify what I'm hearing, the, this will be funded by a charge on the sewer infrastructure component of the sewer utility. It will double the, possibly double the rate. I heard that one hundred dollars would be the net effect of this for standard hookup. What would be the situation for, let's say, a hundred unit apartment? How is, how is that done?
Through your worship, it depends on the size of the meter. So I don't have the figure in front of me for a two-inch meter.
Well, not exactly, sadly, but is it sort of a hundred times of, oh, hold on.
Uh, no, it's.
I, through your worship, I've got that. So where's Kevin? What's the average meter size on an apartment? Two-inch? So on a two-inch, the current rate is about a hundred and fifty-two dollars bi-monthly.
Okay.
So seven hundred, eight hundred dollars a year.
Sure.
And that'll go to double, three hundred and twenty dollars bi-monthly.
Right. And the, and the, based upon the work that the CFO put together, the annual servicing of this loan of eight, possibly eight million dollars, or maybe exactly eight million dollars over the twenty-year period would be about thirteen million to borrow eight million, correct?
Yeah, yes, through your worship. So that's the total cost of the debt over a twenty-year and that's based on a five percent interest rate. So depending when we actually go to the borrowing, that would determine the actual cost of debt servicing, but yes, it's about thirteen million.
Yeah. So being a fiscal conservative, is this, and I recognize, and our manager's put it nicely about the difficulties of this, if the federal government infrastructure funding is announced in June and we haven't actually borrowed the money, would we still be eligible for that?
Yeah, Counselor Parslow, I talked to MP Zimmer last week as we were considering this in terms of the project timelines and funding. The federal government's guidelines are that if you proceed with the project, then you wouldn't be eligible for the federal government infrastructure funding. So I, and I didn't get into details with him in terms of whether we proceeded with just the borrowing, but the project hasn't been started in terms of construction. So that would have to be clarified, but it would be my assumption that we can't demonstrate need based on the project and the financing if we've already got the financing in place. So I would assume we would be, probably eliminate ourselves from the federal infrastructure funding grant if we proceed with it.
Right, if we've sort of gotten the reverse approval, if the, if seven hundred and twenty people vote against this, we go to a full referendum, this option, the feds, might still be open.
Jim?
Through your worship, so in past, again, we haven't seen the criteria for the new program, but criteria for previous programs has said unless the federal and provincial funding, because generally it's a, the Build Canada Fund also has an agreement with provinces, but unless that funding from the senior levels of government is the make or break for the project, you're not eligible. So what they are looking to do is incent work that would not otherwise happen. That is the purpose for their grant. So if you have indicated that you've secured the funding from your internal sources, which is your citizens, then it is not true that the program would only go ahead with the federal component. So it might even be possible that you would have to run a referendum through to completion before you could make that statement to the federal and provincial governments. So who knows? There is no certainty that you will be, we don't know the details of the program. We don't know if it's going to be largely per capita and only small amounts available for these quote merit-based programs. We don't know that. We don't know if we made an application that it would be chosen. We don't know whether it would be federal plus provincial funding or just federal funding because they haven't made their arrangements with the province yet. We don't know any of those things. If you were to wait for those things, that's, the current deficiencies in your sanitary sewer system remain until you do something about them. Yes, when you borrow, you're accumulating about five million dollars in carrying charges, basically, interest charges for this. And so that is an extra cost to the sewer utility. If you don't proceed this year and you don't get federal funding, I can tell you that the pricing next year will be more than this year. And every year you wait to accumulate funding so you pay for cash is going to add costs as well. So the cost of the borrowing is not, can't be completely foregone by waiting till you accumulate cash to build. At some point in time, you will have enough cash to build and at that point in time, the project will be more costly than now.
Yeah, good comment.
Thank you. Counselor Schuman?
I'm curious about the work that we're doing around the sewer DCCs and wondering if we'll recover any money for this specific project through that, like once it's sort of put in place.
So the answer to that would be no. Exactly in the same way you did with water, with the water development cost charges. You must identify, in fact, you have, your sanitary sewer master plan does identify these projects that are growth-related and in the future. And so at the time that you seek ministry approval for your development cost charge, you can only be talking about projects that are growth-related but have not yet commenced.
I, I thought that was the case, but I just wanted to check.
Thank you. Further conversation? Further discussion? Questions? You ready for the question? All in favor? Opposed? It's Carrie. Thank you. Item eight point three. We have a report number one four dash zero three eight from the Director of Infrastructure and Sustainable Development. Counselor McFadden?
Pardon me. I've moved that report number fourteen dash zero three eight from the Director of Infrastructure Sustainable Development regarding zoning amendment bylaw number four two zero four two thousand and fourteen be received. Further, that zoning amendment bylaw number four two zero four two thousand and fourteen regarding amendments to the secondary suite regulations be given first and second reading. And further, that a public information open house be held on March the eleventh, two thousand and fourteen, at City Hall and there. And further, that staff be directed to mail notices to stakeholders and publish the required notice for a formal public hearing.
Thank you. Seconded, Counselor Malkinson. Discussion? Counselor Malkinson?
Just giving thumbs up, your worship. I think this is the right way to go and that, well, sorry, I, I think that I'm looking forward to this process. It's going to be good.
Counselor, sorry, Counselor Schuman, did you have a comment?
No.
Pretty precise today.
Question from me?
Counselor Parslow?
Yes, just thinking of my own, I have business in Victoria. Wait, what time, I would like to be back on for the March the eleventh, open house. Is that scheduled morning or afternoon? Any ideas on it? If I could, I'd like to put in a, a, excuse me a minute.
It's one to four, it says here in the report.
I'd like to put in a pitch for mid-afternoon so that I can be certain I'd be back physically for that meeting rather than phoning in.
So the scheduled time is one to four in the afternoon?
Okay.
And again, it's a workshop setting, so it will be continuously open from one to four. Citizens can drop in at any time to get information and so can counselors. It's not like it will be a presentation format or anything like that.
Okay, thank you, Jim.
Thank you. Further discussion? Ready for the question? All in favor? Opposed? It's Carrie. Thank you.
Item nine, mayor's business. So first item on my list this week was the, I mentioned before Christmas, I arranged through Jim to meet with Reeve Hubert, who's the, almost like the chair of the Saddle Hills County and their CAO. And it was an opportunity to engage in and understand that political, that governance structure that they have in the electoral area outside our boundaries in Alberta. And so they invited me over and I made a presentation to their council, if you like, last week. And it was amazing to me in terms of the similarities, in terms of some of the issues that they're looking to develop and really have a working relationship with us as a community, as a council. And they talked about, for the majority of those rural residents just inside our border of Baytree, Bonanza, Silver Valley, Cotillion, that all trade in the city of Dawson Creek. Ninety-nine percent of them talked about that, about, in fact, they had a little brochure in their lobby that I was reading as I was getting ready to go in. And it was a surprise to me because having lived here all my life, but this village of, the town of Spirit River is actually about thirty-five kilometers closer to Dawson Creek than it is Grand Prairie. And so to me, the conversation and the discussion we had was about the opportunities that we should look to in terms of how we provide certain services and facilities and aspects of our community that could, they certainly benefit from. And so I'd like to talk about that a little bit in future about moving forward with some, starting to, with the CAO and their CAO to start to engage in some, identify some of those things that may benefit us mutually. And I'm just understanding the things that we do every day and that may benefit the region and, and can we cost share in certain things that may be a benefit to us and our residents and our community. And we do with the rural area in the Peace River Regional District. And in some cases, you know, you're ten, sixteen kilometers and you're in the Saddle Hills County and there's nobody there with a gun or at a gate that says you can't come over and that they can't come in here. And I just think it's a really good opportunity for us to engage in that and perhaps leverage the economies of scale to a different level. And also recognize the importance of them as creating people in our community, for our business community. And so I really like the idea of it and I'm going to, I'm going to move forward with a little bit more of it and I'll bring that back to council and perhaps build a joint session for, they were, they were all over the idea of that, like a fat man on a smarty. They liked the idea of hooking with us. So I think it's good that we do that and pursue it. The next one was the Chamber of Commerce Strategic Planning Session. I attended, the Chamber of Commerce held their strategic planning session a week ago Saturday. They invited me over to spend an hour or so with the directors as they were pursuing their own strategic planning for the organization. I have to say in terms of, since I started the role of the mayor and interacting with the chamber and seeing the development of the role that the chamber is playing in our community, and I don't have much experience previous to September the fourteenth, but really am pleased to see how that organization is. The directors, you're getting, building a base of directors where people you're starting to see more and more get involved in the organization. We had some really good conversation for a couple of hours I was there and then they kicked me out about the strategic planning for it. But I see the linkages for us as our community in terms of that strategic planning exercise that we've gone through and the strategic objectives and trying to find some alignment so that we're all going in the same direction and hooking to the cart together and pulling hard to find those common areas that we're shooting for. So I really appreciate the invitation, Kathleen, from the chamber directors and executive to ask me to attend. The city of Dawson Creek, we've completed our strategic planning exercise over the last couple of weeks. And I just got to pull it up. If you can just give me one second to. Would you like me to? Technology.
Has it got the best in you?
Yeah.
Yeah, please. Would you, you'd like me to read them out?
Okay. The priorities, the strategic priorities that council ended up at on, well, at the two in-camera meetings that we had of council last week are as follows. I'll just read out the paper that's on our agenda here.
Duncan, I've got them.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Yep.
Sorry. So our strategic objectives for two thousand and fourteen, and we've done it on a strategic objectives and then followed through with some priorities. So our first one that the council through this planning exercise has arrived at is that we're going to be, our first one is a fiscally responsible and financially viable community. And I think that aligns with everything that we've talked about over the last period of months in terms of our fiscal gap and the importance of that fiscal planning. And so that is the overriding and first strategic objective. The second is to have an informed and engaged public on the critical issues facing the city. And behind that, number three is enhance working relationships with our business community, with targeted sectors within the community. And I think- our business community with targeted sectors within the community. And I think, for me, that whole component, thank you, Bryn, that whole component is really about setting the year in context of what it is we really see as being those, those really high-level strategic objectives we believe we need to look back on in November and say, we've, we experienced some success in that regard and provide that direction to our administration. So the strategic, the strategic priorities, we started out with about a dozen of them that, as we went through the planning exercise with council and with our administration and through last week, a couple of sessions individually with council and then with our administration, we've finished those off with landing on five key strategic priorities for 2014. And the first one is we're going to initiate the work on the fiscal gap challenge. And that's that fiscal imbalance between the expected revenues and the expenditures. By one, we're going to establish a task, a city task force comprised of our counselors, our senior staff, and the citizens to oversee the work, and developing a policy framework to address the issue that includes provision of community engagement. And really, to me, this is about starting that work that we've heard so much about in terms of the fiscal future of our community and how do we, how do we identify the opportunities that exist within that and the work we need to do. And so those first two components are really to engage through a task force and then developing that policy framework of how we move it forward. And I think that's important work for 2014 in terms of us starting to move that discussion forward. It's a long-term, this ain't a sprint. This is about putting a structure in place to identify and how we move that work forward in the future. The second one is obviously, we want to get the completion and opening of the new art center. And that, that work is underway. It's been underway. We've all had the conversation and discussion. That is a priority for this council in 2014. Number three is to tender an award and begin construction of the bypass trunk, sewer trunk line. We just talked about that in regards to our bylaw. That core infrastructure work has been identified by council and obviously is moving it forward to completion, hopefully in 2014. Number four for us is to complete the sewer water Phase Two public consultation campaign on some of the cost estimates of the options associated with the proposed pipeline to transport water to the Peace River and to set a course of action for determining the preferred manner for ensuring an adequate and safe long-term water supply for the city. And number five is the, really determine whether to have an economic development strategy for the city. And so I'm gonna speak to that. All of those five key priorities then are intended for our organization as a city, for our administration, to provide what the goalposts are for us as we see as those key priorities for the work in 2014. Now, there's a whole gamut of other things that are gonna go on in your community in terms of those infrastructure and services you provide. But from the strategic priority setting direction, this is the five that we see as being the five priorities for 2014. And the work is underway in some of them, and it's work we're gonna begin to set for the direction of this community in the future. And for me, I feel a little bit awkward in some respects because starting in late in 2013 as the mayor, it really delayed this planning work that should have been underway. And so the difficulties for the administration and administration staff in order to understand what are those, what are we gonna be held, what are our accountabilities for 2014 and where do you hold our feet to the fire. So it is a short timeframe because we only really basically have about seven months before we're back into the election in the fall of this year to begin that. So it is a tight timeframe. But hopefully it gives the community a sense of the direction that the council is, the leadership of the organization are setting and to provide that opportunity for administration to understand, okay, what is it that we're gonna be executing upon? So those are the 2014 strategic objectives and priorities. And at this time, I'd like to have a motion, if I can, to move those forward. Counselor Malkinson?
I just had a question before I could, Your Worship. Is that, is that all?
Sure.
Well, I, I really, really thank you for your words. It's, you know, really wonderful. I just want to laud, if I can, the process and the importance of having five strategic priorities. I, well, sorry, not just five, but I mean strategic priorities in general. It's, it's great compared to some other communities to have a process with clear things to accomplish at the end of the year. But the question, Your Worship, that I had was about the origin or maybe the role of the strategic objectives that are on top of the priorities. I'm, I'm just, well, how exactly do they fit into our plan? Are they sort of providing, you know, are they sort of principles that we're hoping to achieve our priorities by? Or are they something that will maybe affect staff's recommendations to us? Are they sort of in line with our vision as we have on the wall there? I'm just, I'm just curious what role they play.
So your objectives, in my view, are those high-level statements, communication pieces that guide your communication and the direction that you're taking for your community. So if we say at a high level, we want to be a fiscally and financially responsible and viable community, so the fiscal gap challenge as a priority flows into that objective. So that's the high-level objective that we want to have accomplished in our community. An informed and engaged public on critical issues is about conversation. It's about engaging the community in how we're gonna do things and what we're going to do. And so your sewer water Phase Two public consultation flows into that objective. So the objective are those overarching, overriding statements that guide your community in terms of where it is you want to go. And the priorities are those key priority work items that give the direction for administration in terms of how they're going to move to achieve those objectives for your community.
I, I...
Feel the passion?
Yes, yes. I do feel a lot of passion from you, Dale, and I appreciate that a lot. I, I only ask that because I'm just wondering, you know, how exactly, you know, because in my mind, I've got a, you know, clear vision. The priorities stem from the vision and the guiding principles that we have on the wall there. And the objectives, I'm just uncertain on the origin of them. But it's, that's, that's, that's all.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Further discussion? So I need a motion. Counselor Wilbur seconded. Counselor Kenny, discussion. Counselor McFadden, do you wanna have a word?
I was gonna second that, but I got scooped. So that's, that's fine. That's okay.
Are you ready for the question? All in favor?
Yeah, I'm ready.
Opposed? It's Kerry. Thank you. The last item I want to talk about, and it didn't show up on the agenda because, my apologies for that, but it come in late and on Friday. And so we've been working on a development in our community with administration and a developer that are looking to, and it's not a developer, it's a business that's going to be setting up into our community. And I want to just, because they haven't made a formal announcement, but it is out in, as a matter of public record, as part of their corporate fourth quarter report. And so as a result of the interactions over the last three or four months, AltaGas and P&amp;G are moving forward with a $22 million LNG facility in the city of Dawson Creek at the west edge of town. It's a scalable, it's a commercial, it's a facility that would provide LNG for the purposes of commercial and even in some cases residential purposes. They'll produce the LNG here, obviously in town. And then they use the description of being able to ship and truck LNG out of our community up to some of the northern communities like Inuvik or Tuk-toyaktuk that rely on propane as a, as a source of their energy needs. And so this is a huge announcement for our community to have a $22 million investment occur in the city of Dawson Creek. I really feel badly, well, in some respects I do, but I really don't, I'm Pinocchio going there, that they haven't made a formal corporate announcement on it. But it is out, and so I'm ecstatic. I'm dancing over the moon to see that we have that kind of investment occur in our community that continues to build and guide our community in terms of the future. So that happened late Friday afternoon, and my apologies to AltaGas and P&amp;G if I've scooped them.
Question?
Yes, Counselor Parswell?
Yeah, I haven't made anywhere the direct employment as a result of this investment. Do you have any information in that?
Yeah, Charlie, it won't be a big producer of jobs or it's not that kind of a plant. It's a small, scalable facility. It may have one or two people that would be overseeing the, the operation, I would assume. The big benefit for us comes, one, you have that kind of an investment in your community as a utility. So it's a, it's a fairly significant capital investment that will generate long-term benefits to our community in terms of the tax revenue that it would pay. And the other thing it brings is that transportation, because there's now, there's gonna be the transportation of that commodity out of, into our, from our community is gonna be leaving. And so that creates jobs, indirect jobs from the trucking companies and those types of service companies that provide the support to it. So in direct jobs, it's not that many, Charlie, but indirectly for us as a community, it's a big capital investment that, as a light, as a utility company, the tax rates on that would be fairly significant compared to a commercial building.
Yes, right on. And also it's more of an environmentally friendly product.
And you think about the benefits to some of these small communities, the Inuvik, the Tuk-toyaktuk, that rely on propane as a heating source. Now, they have natural gas as a potential commodity for them. And what a great benefit to AltaGas and P&amp;G to broaden and expand that ability to provide that service and product to all of northern British Columbia or western Canada.
Right.
And they've chosen Dawson Creek as the first location to begin that business development. So, thank you. That's, that's it from the mayor's business. Any questions?
Good job, Mayor.
Good job, Mayor.
Thank you. Diary number 10?
I'll just ask Duncan to report off on Calvin Crook.
Good morning and welcome.
Yeah. So Calvin Crook Center, Haggy Construction is moving along nicely. I won't get through the nitty-gritty details of what they're doing in there, but I'll, I'll highlight a couple of key items that have been completed. So they've completed the donor wall at the entrance, completed all of their structural steel studding in the basement, including the ceiling T-bar and the studying for drywalling. The archives seem to be the furthest along. They're drywalling in there now. They've completed the vault in the back, the flooring. They're doing some of the, the more aesthetic features in there being the acoustic wood ceilings. They're working on patching and painting on some of the main and upper floor, fixing some of the linoleum bubbles and things like that that were left over from the previous contract, pulling phone lines in. And actually Haggy has secured the controls contractor Norcap Electric out of Prince George, which we're very happy about. They did the first stage of this project, so they're familiar with it. They have the codes for the control system, and they also operate, or they also installed the multiplex. So we're familiar with this contractor. Quite happy with that. We've secured the commissioning agent. If you recall at the last meeting, we're still working on getting them back on board from the first phase. We've secured StanTech. And again, it's very nice. They are familiar with the building. They're familiar with what's left over, and they can just slide in there and commission the building as we move forward. And lastly, we're working on an operating report for council, which will go to close hopefully March 17th, which will just present some options, I guess, for council moving forward in the operation of the building. Outside of that, Haggy has built up to 30% so far, and that's up to the end of February. That's all I have to report on.
Any questions? Duncan, we just passed the strategic priorities. And so item two, if you want to give that over to Olaf and John and let them know that they could include this in their next staff meeting.
That it needs to be done, yes. I could do that.
Good job. Thank you. Any further questions? Thank you, Duncan. Appreciate it. And for our staff meeting today, we're gonna have council's strategic objectives. Item 11, 11-1. We have a letter from Sheldon Wilkinson, the President of the Dawson Creek Senior Canucks, in regards to the Montreal Canadian Alumni Game. Counselor Kenny?
Received for information.
Thank you. Seconded, Counselor McFadden, discussion. So Barry, can I, do you have a, could you give us just a quick, how, snapshot on how, for the purpose of the public, how that ended up for us as an event?
For us as a city...
Or for the, for the organization and number of people and...
Yeah, for us as a city, it was very successful. Our job in relationship to bringing in tourism sport-related events was very successful. Filled the building, which is always great. Number of hotel or a hotel and food business, we're able to reap the benefits of that in a lot of different ways. Minor hockey was involved greatly, and most of all, we filled a rink, which was a lot of fun. And in the end run, the partnership with city established with the Senior Canucks, I don't have the final figures. I've met with Aaron on the final figures of that, but it looks like they will also make some decent profit from that. So it's a win-win all the way through. And although I didn't participate, I did hear that the, the party after for the Montreal Canadiens was a lot of fun, and they thoroughly enjoyed our city. So, thank you.
Thank you, Barry. Appreciate that.
And the last thing, I understand a certain reporter was able to get a Gila Flur interview. I was overly thrilled. That might have happened.
Thank you, Barry.
Can confirm or deny.
All those in favor? Did we have the vote?
No.
All those in favor? Opposed? Kerry. Thank you. Great event. Item 12, 12-1, we got the strategic priorities chart. So I'll, in future council meetings, the, your newly adopted priority chart will appear in this spot.
Thank you.
Question and answer period?
No, I signed up for the membership.
Are we gonna move, do you wanna move right into committee of the whole?
There is no committee of the whole this meeting.
Not today. Media question, period?
Yeah, I have one. You guys don't mind? Sorry. About the federal funding for infrastructure projects. I know that there are a lot of hoops that you guys will have to go through in order to apply for those types of things. I'm just wondering if you guys have any long-term projects that you guys are thinking of, that you might want to apply? I know that if this, even if the sewer doesn't fit into that, if there's anything on your list right now that you're thinking that needs to go for approval?
Yeah, I think our focus has been, till now, to focus on the sewer trunk line project. That's where we had sent the material into the federal government. We have put the project information that we've had to them, and we were moving forward with the proposal to try to gain the, into the federal infrastructure program for that particular project. We haven't had any discussion as a council for consideration of any other future projects that may be on the horizon that may qualify for it. But this year, as we go through some of those conversations and discussions, that may raise the information for us, as well as a better understanding of the project too, are the federal infrastructure program. Jim?
Yeah, through Your Worship, if you look at your five-year financial plan and the capital works that are identified there, about a quarter of them would have qualified under the old guidelines. So I can't really pass a judgment on whether they qualify under the new guidelines until those guidelines are published. But if there's a similarity between past guidelines and future guidelines, yes, I would suggest you would be making annual applications to that program, as you did under the old Build Canada before it was discontinued.
Thank you. Any further questions? Media? Andrea? I just couldn't resist. Thank you. So we'll recess to our closed meeting. Counselor Malkinson, Counselor Wilbur, all those in favor? Opposed? Kerry. Thank you. Thank you, everyone. 10 minutes, Your Worship? Yes.